One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Public comment, if we have any, Jessica, look for our raised hands as I usually ask, and we'll see.
Claire is our only resident on here, so I don't think she has anything to comment on.
All right, no one's raised. All right. Get right into new business correspondence for public hearing for National Grid continuation from last time, gentlemen. They have got back, get the copies.
Smartphone connected.
They got their copies to Jason. Jason said he has no problems, he likes where it's staked, just wants to caution them to watch out, dig far enough back so they don't affect the new pavement. But he says he's all set with the plan. So look for motion.
Motion to approve the poll petition WR 29290398 and 29978299.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the poll petitions for National Grid. Any further comment on those? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Continuance of public hearing, National Grid petition, nevermind, we did both, thank you. Reading along turkey here. Conservation Chair Rich requests to discuss town vehicle and recent commission. Ron, you out there?
Yes.
Ron Rich is gonna join us. Have a seat. If you're down that way, the speakers are closer to you.
Right here.
Sure.
Need my mask on?
That's up to you, I don't.
Okay. I'm fine. I came here tonight just to get some clarity on your recent appointment to the Conservation Commission.
Sure.
I, as chairman, I had a recommendation to selectman Urban to appoint Frank Larrange to that position from the alternate position, which has been, usually been the case that we've followed for many years. And Frank's been a valuable asset to us because of the fact that he's generally home during the day, so he can back me up if I can't get out to a job, it needs to be looked at right away. So, you know, I was a little dismayed at that, what transpired.
Be glad to clarify.
And I should have been, I think as chairman, I should have been consulted on who's being appointed to my commission.
All right.
You know, there was a couple of applications that came in.
Yes.
One application was late, which was past your deadline, from what I understand, and the other application was somebody that had some environmental experience as well. So, I'm just kind of, a little...
Well, the, first of all, we talked, the original letter we got from you guys expressed to us that you were concerned that the full-time member wasn't able to make, so it wasn't functioning.
Exactly, yes.
So, we wanted to, you know, there was a whole lot of debate online, which was very irritating to see about, you know, he hasn't stepped down, we can't appoint somebody, he's appointed by the board.
Right.
We could, you know, we can remove him because he's being ineffective, as the board and the chairman have told us, and reappoint someone. Then we had the option to move up the part-time or put somebody different in. That seat, I believe the appointment expires this June, so it's only temporary appointment till June anyways. So we thought we'd bring some new blood in, assuming the guy that you have, Larrange, is already making meetings, this will give another person making meetings, rather than risk moving Larrange in, then like you'd ask, put Kurt in, still not, it didn't, it didn't give us any more bodies for the vote.
I understand.
We wanted to make more bodies for the vote. We had somebody that's new blood showing interest in our town politics and things, which, as you know how it's been over the years, it's been hard to fill our committees. So to have new blood coming in, who seem to have some good qualifications and experience, we thought, hey, it's till June, it doesn't hurt to get him in, it sounds like he's gonna be active, we're gonna get another person in there to vote. And, I don't know, Matt or Dylan, if you have anything different to add, that was my perspective of why we went that way.
That's exactly how I understood it.
Well, I had spoken to Ron on the phone. I had spoken to Kirk Wells. We had our meeting. When it came time for making a motion, Greg had made the motion for Luke Rotti, and at that time, I have had previous business relations with Luke Rotti, so I abstained and stayed out of the conversation because of that. And I truly don't disagree with the points that Greg and Dylan are making. The recommendation from the Conservation Commission was just to flip Frank and Kurt. The letter either directly said or implied that you're having difficulty getting meetings because...
Because of a quorum.
You couldn't get enough people to attend meetings. Putting Frank into a full-time position wouldn't have changed that, because he was all, already somebody that could vote if he was, if you didn't have enough standing members.
So it didn't help.
So I didn't understand moving him up making a difference in his participation or the board's, the Conservation Commission's ability to hold a meeting. So, and today's my last meeting, so I really couldn't get much more involved, Ron.
And I think the last thing, I believe that when we did put it out and advertise it, that Frank actually didn't put in for the, in the advertisement.
No, he didn't.
And that was the last consideration, he didn't even apply for the, to show interest to us that he had it. So, you know, it seemed real obvious, and it's until June, I apologize if it's ruffles and feathers, it wasn't our intent.
I just wanted to remind you folks that Frank was a full-time member before. We had a professional come on, onto our staff. So Frank stepped back to give that position to that full-time professional, and became the alternate, so I, you know, that's...
Right.
I kinda...
But once again, the whole, if we move him up, if we head to what you asked, we're doing, it doesn't change your vote.
Yeah, I understand that.
And when we didn't get his application for it, I didn't really want to consider, since we asked for applications and he didn't throw his name in there, it was kinda like, all right, I'm gonna consider the two we have, and the one I thought we picked had, seemed to have good qualifications and have good interests. And once again, this is till June. End of June, we have to reappoint, you know, for full-time positions and everything again.
Yes, absolutely, yes. I understand that.
Not intending to disrespect and not listen to your advice on it, but it didn't make sense for, you know, the letter saying that we weren't making a quorum, it didn't, that didn't seem to benefit that in anyway.
Yeah, actually, I, yeah, we, we're having trouble getting enough participate.
Right, hopefully this gives, like I said, new blood, another body, and hopefully it...
Well, I hope the new candidate then does show up for the meetings.
We hope so, and once again, in another two months, it'll be moved. You know, we can keep him or reappoint.
One other thing I just wanted to bring up about, about that is, we used to be able to use the, a vehicle to do some of our site visits, because it's not uncommon for me to have to do a half a dozen in a week.
Yep.
We used to use the building inspector's vehicle, but that hasn't happened in several years, the building inspector's vehicle has disappeared. So, I wonder if you guys could help us out.
Right now, that's the way I just asked Jessica about it, I don't know if she got to Hardwick or not on, but Hardwick is the one that picked that vehicle up on a grant that gets winds up getting housed in Hardwick. And I don't, and it's intended for the building inspector.
Right.
I don't know if they'd have objection to us getting hold of it for inspections of that. I believe we're paying, weren't we not part of the expense of that somehow, whatever expense they were incurring?
Yeah, in the...
So we adjusted the municipal agreement.
Regional Building Commissioners Agreement, we were, we had, each town had a certain amount that they owed, based on, I think it was the number of permits over a certain number of years average. And so we kind of allotted the amount of hours we thought the building commissioner would have to spend in each town. Hardwick, though, by donating the electric vehicle to the cause, actually had their assessment reduced based on the value of that vehicle. So technically, we were in a way paying Hardwick, but it was defined to be used for the building commissioner and for the purposes of that regional agreement. So it, we couldn't just have it, the Conservation Commission use it without, going back to New Braintree, Petersham, and Hardwick to see if they had concern with the use of that vehicle in that manner, because it wasn't part of the original agreement.
It doesn't mean it's impossible, but it's...
I get, I get it, it's a new situation.
It's contractual with our municipal agreement between those three towns.
So I don't know if there's anything that we could work out with, with something else.
Well, otherwise, I don't know what DPW has available for pickup trucks and things, but we'd have to ask Jason. I think he'd be agreeable during the day if he had something available, but I don't know.
Well, it looks a little better when we turn an official vehicle, instead of somebody thinking that, you know, you're jumping on for something.
Well, something else we could consider is a town vehicle, but once again, you know, do we buy an electric to be used to go around town for stuff, we look into a smaller vehicle for the town? You know, it would be nice to have one, we pay a lot of people, you know, for vehicle for miles when they go into classes, and, you know, like with Jessica, when to her classes, or anyone goes to the classes and training, and we pay out for that by the mile. It's certainly probably...
Well, I'm totally aware of it, but, you know, it's a little bit cumbersome sometimes to, if I add them all up, I'd probably drive myself crazy, but...
But I'm saying, we do pay a lot of them as is.
Yes.
It would, I think, be smart to think about putting a vehicle in the budget if we could, either, either electric, if there's grant money for it, because we have the electric charging station.
I'm sure, I'm sure that I'm probably not the only board that...
But I think they have a range of like 25 or 30 miles, they don't have a big range to them.
For an electric vehicle?
Right.
It depends on what electric vehicle you get, but usually they're probably 100, 150...
That much?
If it's a Tesla, which I'm not saying we should get a Tesla.
Why don't we get a Tesla?
That's like a 400-mile range, but, no, they have pretty impressive...
Well, if there's 100 miles, that would be a good range, I mean, I just don't know enough about them, but...
Well, you know, we, I can go to the same site sometimes four or five times.
See, if we picked up, and the thing is, do we pick up a small car, we better off with a pickup truck, just because these sites are probably off-road, not always paved. That's the other, other concern. But, go ahead, Matt, a sedan is better, I think.
I guess recently, in the last, maybe last week and a half, two weeks, after our last meeting, I was, I think randomly, it was, it was either Twitter or Facebook, I think it's the town of Needham, was in a program where they actually bought four or five, I think hybrid interceptors. And so they're much more fuel efficient, they're a combination electric vehicle and gas. And I was wondering anyway about that for the, the fire department's been looking for their new inspector slash chief's vehicle, and I thought it would work well for that. But it also may be good for a similar application, have a second one that is more for kinda this, this use, where it's for various boards or the town administrator's office to kind of loan out as beneficial to the town. It is an SUV-type vehicle, so it's designed to be able to do a little of the off-roading that I know Ron would probably appreciate. Last thing you want to give him is a pre-ask and say, could you go way out in that field and see that stream running through? So I do think we need to pay attention to the type of vehicle we get for that type of purpose. But they are considered green, and they're considered kind of the newer, they're the next step for kind of an all-terrain vehicle for like a municipality who invest in, they've kinda been a little bit time-tested, and they have the capability to, I mean, they can be turned into a police car. They have the ability to be a police car, and apparently, they actually don't need to be running 24/7 like a police car because of the way the battery and electric vehicle thing works, they don't have to keep that alternator running non-stop. I just read a little bit about it, but it was one of the things I was gonna bring up with the Selectmen's Report anyway regarding use of this new, it's not the CARES Act, right? It's a, it's a new act, but the new funding that came in, but it seems to apply to this subject a little bit too.
That's a good idea, especially if we can dip into that, those funds, and not have to, you know, strictly fund it.
I'm just making a point that it looks a little more professional.
Oh, yeah. Most towns have some vehicles in some manner, but...
When we go to a meeting, there, all the town, a lot of towns have them.
Right.
Conservation Commission or whatever, right on them, or, you know, boards.
You know, there's always, you know, municipal and get used vehicles, but I think just picking up someone else's problems, make more sense to pick one up. Just gotta budget it and see if we can, if it goes into that CARES funding or this COVID funding, that'd be a great way to do it, you know?
Sure.
But we gotta, gotta see where that's gonna fit, and that's, all more work for Jessica, she just loves it when these meetings happen. So did you find out anything with Hardwick on that vehicle, or no?
I have a conversation scheduled tomorrow with Hardwick, so I was gonna bring it up when I talk to the town administrator there tomorrow, but everything that Matt said about the agreement with the building commissioner is, is on point, so I don't, I don't know if it would be as easy for us to just say, well, we're in this regional agreement already, so can we use the vehicle for purposes outside of the building inspector? And then the other thing is that it does say the town of Hardwick on the vehicle, so if you're looking for something specific to Berry, that's, you know...
Which is, you know, in theory, the town of Hardwick shouldn't be using it for anything, it's set aside for the building inspector only. That's why we've all paid for it, and we paid the lion's share.
No, I realize that.
The other thing that I wanted to mention too, that Chairman Rich just kinda jogged my saw on, was that the fire department used CARES Act money to get a device that makes ID cards. And, you know, part of the reason why the fire department got that was to help different departments, and in this case, the Conservation Commission, you know, for identification purposes, like, the building inspector has an ID card from the state that he can show for identification, but in this case, you know, I have one that I can show if somebody's questioning my identity, that shows that it's an official town of Berry business. So in the interim, we could also set up something like that if you're worried about people questioning your authority or what you're, you know, able to do at a certain site.
I think since we have that machine, we should look into having, at least for boards and committees, ID cards, or possibly even employee ID cards, because a lot of times, public works, whether it's water, sewer, or just, just the highway, you have to go to people's properties and they might question what's going on.
Yeah.
So I think it would be good, you know, to get with the chief or with probably James full-time and start putting some of those cards out and getting IDs made up for everybody.
Yeah, we've been slowly trying to get them out to all of the different departments, just take some time, of course.
We had, we had asked about that many years ago.
Right, we had no way to do them before, the only possibility was through the high school, because they did some sort of IDs.
Well, that was possible.
They actually used to make them, they used to make them for the, for the fire department back then. But, yeah, that's, that's great, they have the machine now, they should be able to make up IDs and, and for everybody. So, we're definitely looking at the vehicle. Possible, it's possible to use that vehicle, especially if we pre-arrange it on occasions where you know you're gonna need it, we might be able to. Because, yeah, those Hardwicks should not be using anything else, it was for the building inspector, just...
Right.
You know, they should have no more right to start using it for their own town offices as we would for ours, without asking people of it, because it was, it was set for the building commissioner, it was paid for mostly by Berry as, as the larger holder of that.
Right, right. Well, we used it before, it was owned by the town.
Right.
You know, we were in the regional agreement at that time, so I can understand the situation with that vehicle.
And we could also talk, like I said, to DPW, but I think generally, most of the pickups are gonna be busy during the day. You know, it's not like they have a pile of extra trucks running around, they have enough to keep the guys working, and they take them out of service and they're not. Best bet would be do something at town meeting, and if we get to use some CARES money somehow, I think that'd be, you know, fantastic. But we do need one, I think, I think it's time to pick one up and figure out how we're gonna fund it, it's not gonna be an expensive vehicle. You know, it's gonna be, it'll be a stripped-down model with, you know, no electric anything.
We really, believe it or not, don't really need four-wheel drive.
That's a...
And usually, the things that we're looking at are off of a road, off of paved right away, or...
And still a pickup, opposed to a car, like clearance, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You go over a road like mine, you're gonna find out that little car isn't gonna go too good.
Yes.
For obvious reasons.
So that, that even brings the cost down if we save with two-wheel drive pickups instead of four, quite a bit, quite a bit. I mean, even if you look at some of the smaller size pickups instead of the full-size pickups, I think they're pretty reasonable. But even so, I think F-150s, the last year or two, were down just over 20 grand, 20 couple, they weren't much.
Sure.
So, I think it's doable. You guys have anything to add?
No, I think, I think moving forward with the IDs is an important piece. I recall Ron and, and the planning board bringing it up back when I first got on the Board of Selectmen, we were having issues with just the idea, you got a site visit, you have business there, but not everybody knows every member of a board, so when they start showing up in a group, it's, it's a little intimidating to the homeowner.
Right, we did, we did discuss it too.
We've had the police call before.
Not, not a surprise.
Yeah, you know, I mean, what...
People say, well, where's your ID?
Yeah, well, what are you doing here?
Well, I would, I would think any of the committee members, if it took, it took a minute to reach out to Chief Rogowski when you get a chance, I'm sure he would line it up. Especially Jessica's nodding yes, wanna do it, so let the other board members know on their own. The IDs will have to include an expiration date for when their term goes to, so people know when they expire, we can't just hand out them open-ended.
Right.
So, they could check with Jessica when that, when those dates are, if they're not sure of when those terms expire.
Yeah, I, I don't have mine on me right now, it's up in my office, but it does, for every employee, still have an expiration date, just to make sure that we're staying current on...
If you could, I kinda prioritize going through a couple of committees quickly.
Definitely.
And noting the personnel members and their expiration dates, and as soon as that list can make it to Chief Rogowski, anybody can come in whenever they're ready.
Yep.
And, you know, assuming they're not out on a call or something, and get one made up, these contacts will make arrangements, but, you know, listen to the scanner, if they're not out on a call, they're probably down there available. Let's get that done. And we'll work on the vehicle.
Okay, I appreciate your time, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Glad you came in, and apologized and this end of seeing with the seat, but this, I think it makes sense what we're doing, trying to get another, another vote in there, another body, not, not just shift around what you are, for sure, because...
As long as everybody shows up, then it's fine.
All right, thank you, thanks, Ron. Next up, request use town property, Lions Club boot drive. Looks like the Lions Club wants to have a boot drive Saturday, May 15th, from 9:00 to noon, Concert Way, Uptown, Norene Park, Main Street, and South Berry. It says, Joe, Petrichome is working with the police. Have you looked at that, or talked to the chief about that?
Um, I have not talked to the chief about that yet, but I know that when Tim reached out to Sandy with the request, they are working on it, and it's the same thing that they've done for the past couple of years.
I was gonna say, we've done it several years already, so I don't think it's a...
My understanding.
I don't think it's anything unusual. I look for a motion on that, else you guys wanna go a different way with it?
Do we usually waive the, waive the fee for, for the Lions Club?
Probably do, yes. It's really not incurring us any expense, don't usually have detail offices or anything for it.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the use of, the request for use of town property by the Berry Lions Club on...
May 15th.
May 17th?
15th.
15th.
On 5, yeah.
I don't see it here on the, on the form, but it may 15th.
Buried in the middle. Dates and times requested, it's right underneath the request.
Gotcha. Yep.
I second that.
I have motion and a second to allow the use of property by the Lions Club. Any further discussion on that, such as the fees?
No, I would just be, again, I don't see an issue where we're worried about any wear and tear or use of any of the property being used, we're not using utilities, but we do need to pay attention to, this is a certain source of revenue to even just help with the administrative duties of processing the, the request. So, I'm not saying don't waive it, but we may wanna start paying attention to what we're waiving and how it's affecting things, just in case it's starting to dig a small hole in a revenue that helps fund certain other things. That's all, just keep in mind on it, we've been waiving a lot lately, and I think there's a good reason for it.
We do have a $50 nonprofit fee, but in boot drives, you know, I don't know how well they do on their boot drives, I remember when the fire department would do it back for muscular dystrophy in the past, you know, $2,000 was a really good day, and that was eight hours of standing out with bunches of people, so I, you know...
No, I, and for this specifically, I definitely don't wanna see them do a boot drive and give it to us just so they can stand in the street and ask for money, so, I agree, I, it was just more of a, as things move along, different requests come in, just, we gotta be careful, not just give everything away free.
All right, the motion as it stands did not include waiving the fee, did it?
I don't believe so. I'll make a motion that we waive the fee for the Berry Lions Club use of town property on May 15th for the boot drive.
Second.
Well, let's back up a step then and do that separately. Let's make a vote on the first motion to approve the use of town property. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Now, we can act on the motion and a second to waive the fee for the boot drive. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Next, we have the next step.
Studio.
Oh, it's, it's, I don't know if it's just apprentice.
Yeah, I think it's the way that it was scanned in.
Next step, studio performing arts wishes to use the town hall on April 10th from 4:00 to noon.
9:00 AM.
9?
9:00 AM to noon.
Okay, it looks like a 4. 9:00 AM to noon. Ages 2 to 5. Estimated 100 people will attend, wow. So look for a motion on that use of property?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to use town property for the next step, studio performing arts for April 10th.
And we've made sure that doesn't conflict with anyone?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second it then. Motion is second to approve the use of town property in the town hall for the next step art studios. Any further discussion?
Just, it's an inside use at 50% capacity, I don't know what the current protocols are, but this is this coming weekend, so whatever the protocols are in place through this weekend, we just may wanna make sure that they're following the rules.
As far, as far as I know, they are 50% capacity for protocols.
Yes, it is 50% capacity, and that, that's the reason why she put 100, is because she knew that was the maximum number of people who could attend, so that's just, she doesn't expect to hit 100 people, but that's just what the maximum capacity is right now.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. We are, did you say we had... We are, did you say we had the request back from the Lions Club for their car show? Because I don't see that here.
Yes, I put that under old business.
Okay, so we'll get to it later?
Yep.
Okay. Wage authorizations.
Mr. Chair, I think we have another request from Next Step Studio, the next page, a different date.
Did I just go by two and not realize it?
You may, if one was handwritten, one was typed, so.
Oh, yeah, I did. I apologize. So we have another request use town property by Next Step Dance Studio on April 29th from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. Put promotion on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to use town property for Next Step Studio Performing Arts for the Town Hall, April 29th, 2021.
I second that.
Motion and second to approve the use of town property. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Next, we have two wage authorizations from the Fire Department. I'll read them, but I will not act on them, as per usual. We have FD 3... Minimum, thank you. 1742 an hour for Emily Walker. And we have an FD 2 Step 1 for Joe Brodmichael on call. I think that's just an increase for him. 1823 an hour.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the wage authorization for Emily Walker and for Joseph Brodmichael.
I second that.
Motion and second to approve the wage authorizations for these two firefighters. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan abstained. Historical Commission appointment, Lucy Allen. Where are we for that?
I was just going to talk to the board about the next two historical commission appointments.
Okay, please do.
With Mr. Penguin's passing a couple of weeks ago, that left an opening on the Historical Commission. And Lucy Allen reached out to me right after his passing with an interest of taking the open seat on the Historical Commission. And when I was talking to Ellen, our town clerk, I was trying to understand the difference between the Historical Society and the Historical Commission. And when we were looking through the boards and committees, we noticed that there were actually two vacant seats on the Historical Commission. So Margaret Marshall also expressed an interest in being appointed on the Historical Commission. She's involved with the Historical Society. And Lucy Allen, as a lot of people in the community know, has been very active in preserving the town of Berry's history, and this appointment is, would mean a lot to her. And she's very invested in getting the Historical Commission back to, you know, being active and maintaining all the work that Mr. Penguin did.
What are the terms of those two appointments, and what's the open part of the term in those two appointments?
They are each three years, and I would have to go back through our database and look at when the end term, the ending of that term would be.
Okay. You guys have any comments or motions?
I would make a motion that we approved the request to appoint Lucy Allen and Margot Petraccone to the Historic Commission.
I'll second that motion, please.
Margaret Marshall.
Listed as Margaret Marshall.
Margaret Marshall.
I misremembered, my apologies.
So we have motion and a second. Do we have a second?
Yep, second.
Motion and a second to appoint Lucy Allen and Margaret Marshall to the open Historical Commission seats for the remainder of those three-year terms. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Discussion of Rutland State Park abandoned prisons. Is that where this DLS is?
No, the DLS is for mosquito spraying.
Okay.
The state prison that is DCR. But I didn't know if maybe Matt wanted to start that conversation up.
Matt, you want to jump into that?
Yeah, it's, um, I, just to give a brief history, and it kind of adds into why I got myself confused between Margaret Marshall and Margot Petraccone. He is, but, um, was it just before the pandemic hit?
Yes.
The Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee brought to our attention that DCR was looking to shut down the gates in many of the access points to the Ware River Watershed. I believe Berry, there's a huge population in Berry as well as in Rutland, OCAM, and I believe even parts of Hubbardston that were affected by this. There was a big outcry about what DCR was planning on doing without really, what appeared to not really be listening to the people in the communities that are affected. One of the big parts of DCR's management of the area is also to manage and maintain the historic aspects of the area they took from these four towns in order to create the Ware River Watershed and put it under the state jurisdiction. And when I tie in Lucy Allen and Margot Petraccone, not necessarily Margaret Marshall, it was because they also, at that time, ended up requesting to be put on the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee as Berry's representatives. You get one from your local Historic Society, and one as a representative from the Board of Selectmen, I believe, appointed by the Board of Selectmen. It may be the Historic Commission, I forget which one. And the reason I'm tying that together is now DCR is talking about demolishing several of the concrete wall structures, foundations, and filling in an old pit that they now deem to be either hazardous or just attractive to graffiti. There are a couple hazardous items that even speaking with a selectman from Rutland, Jeff Stillings, I believe is similar to me in a, the end of his term type, moving into his election that's happening shortly in Rutland. But we both agree that there are a couple items that are safety hazards, filling in the hole in the ground so people don't fall in, understood. But when it comes to just taking down the concrete walls that have been painted, or the stone walls that have been painted, rather than just removing the graffiti or painting it over with a new paint to get rid of the graffiti, we feel like it's not really, I feel like, I don't want to speak for others, it's not really maintenance just to remove it. It's trying to avoid the maintenance. And the maintenance is the responsibility of the state. They took it on when they took the land. And this is a historic piece of our culture in this area. It happens to be in Rutland, but it still affects our region, so for me, I would, I would be voicing a support of Rutland in their request to not have full demolition as DCR has proposed.
I would add that, you know, I've been in the Fire Department now for, oh my gosh, 18 years or so. I can't recall ever going out there for someone being injured out by the prison camp, so. They may cite that it's a hazard, but it's not something we've had any issues with. Doesn't mean that there aren't issues that might need to be addressed like the holes, but I certainly don't consider the area a hazard. And I know many people would argue that they're, you know, a historic value to the town, and they shouldn't be just demolished, so. I agree, we should be objecting to demolishing these things completely, but certainly should be open to looking at safety repairs or implementations for filling in holes, whatever is needed. Dylan?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what both of you said. It is, it's not necessarily something that I think of when I think of what the Berry Board of Selectmen, it doesn't seem to fall under our jurisdiction necessarily, but I don't see why not putting out a statement of support for Rutland's position to either maintain the site as it is, or ask the state to reimagine how they want to fix the problems as they see it. But I don't know where we fit into this puzzle here, Berry Board of Selectmen, but I definitely grew up going to that site out in Rutland, and I personally don't want to see it, I don't want to see it gone.
I would dare say we fit into that just because we are the voice for the town as the official members representing this town in all issues like this, so. Without this falling squarely in any other committee, I would say it falls squarely on our shoulders to be responsible for speaking out on behalf of the people of the town for this. And that's why I recommend we do endorse Rutland's concerns.
I would also say that, maybe this is me being cynical, but it's also just the way, it's just who I am, what's the reasoning behind, how does this happen? And if Berry doesn't stand with Rutland, then the state can easily divide and conquer and start doing the same thing to historic monuments on the Berry side of the Ware River. And so if we don't stand with Rutland, why would Rutland stand with us? And then the state wins both ways, and they pretty much divided us and conquered us. So when it comes to anything regarding the Ware River, I think all of our communities really need to stand strong about what we believe is the proper preservation of that area.
I'd suggest we have Jessica draft a letter, perhaps both to the Rutland Select Board and to the state, expressing our wishes that they reconsider removing the buildings and look for alternative ways to deal with the situation without destroying the historical value of what's there.
I would agree. Yes. Is this a motion thing, or is this?
I think we ought to make a motion, take a vote on it, make that official. And make a motion that we direct Jessica to write such a letter.
Second.
Motion and second for Jessica to write a letter on the behalf of the Board of Selectmen, sending to Rutland and the DCR. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes. Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. You get the gist of what we're after. I assume we trust that you can write something without us needing to proofread it.
I'll have a signatory line for you.
Sure.
I think it would be best just to have Greg sign it, just one signature.
Sure, you can leave a signatory line and make a note that this is on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
And we'll get that out there.
Yep.
Next, we have discussion. DLS opt-out opportunity for mosquito spraying. I'm not objectionable to mosquito spraying, and if we do opt out, we have to come up with some other management plan that we're going to put into place ourselves. So I don't care to opt out of it. Gentlemen have any different opinion or discussion?
Yes.
Do they do this every year?
I don't know if we've done this, I don't think we've been doing it every year, but I think they've been watching the trend of mosquitoes again with Triple E, and they're getting more concerned out in this area, so. I know when I was a kid, it was a common thing. They'd go out and they'd spray so many times in the, in the early summer. Yeah, we'd go indoors, get out the spray, let it go by and settle, and we're good to go. I mean, I think most of us use mosquito spray, or sometimes spray our properties and do things to try to keep it in check, but some more wholesale effort to keep the mosquito population down, I believe. I haven't read the exact text, because it's very small print, and I didn't bring my glasses tonight. But I'm generally in favor of spraying for mosquitoes in a timely manner.
Seeing that we can respond by May 15th, is it worth putting this in front of the Conservation Commission and just seeing if they have any opinions about it?
It doesn't hurt, we certainly have the time.
I don't, I don't imagine that everyone who lives in town would necessarily be jumping at the joy, jumping in, jumping with joy at the idea of mosquito spraying. Not necessarily against it or for it, I just, if there are other eyes that can take a look at this before we give it the go-ahead, I feel like that.
Right, well, the only, the only caveat to that is that if they, if other groups or boards do object to it, they have to come up with an alternative plan approved by the EEA to manage mosquitoes before we can opt out. So we can't, if they want to opt out, we can only, we can only do so if we have another approved plan to deal with it.
Well, there is an alternate management plan listed in this letter. So I don't know if that might be something that they could look at. But it seems like they have, they give us the option right here in this, right here in this note, in the last paragraph there, that said that there's an alternative management plan.
Well, we have to create...
Unless I'm misreading it.
Yeah, I think the intention of this letter is to say that we would have to create the alternative mosquito management plan. I haven't come across one that is designed by the state.
Okay, understood.
I got two thoughts on this, is, one is the Conservation Commission may also be more in tune with possible alternate plans. I also think that when we think mosquitoes, we get very narrow-minded on, the only thing mosquitoes do is make humans sick. And they have a different impact to the environment than just making things sick, whether they're food for other predators, other birds, bugs, or bats, they, when you... I don't recall Berry ever reaching a point where, at least not up until last year, that we've ever had major concerns with Triple E or the West Nile virus or anything making it into our area that they've been able to prove. My concern is spraying for mosquitoes before the issue arrives in this area could potentially be just putting your blinders on and just waiting to see what the environmental impact is rather than thinking about it before doing it. And I'm just not, I'm not a fan of it. We already know that we have issues with bee populations dropping. We have issues with bat populations dropping, and they all say they don't know why, yet they keep throwing chemical sprays out there to kill off other populations of insects and... Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that they haven't tried to do certain testing, but truth is, there's not a lot of money in it to try to prove that mosquito spraying is bad. The money's behind proving that it's good. You know, the people are trying to prove that it's better in that regard than... So I'm not a fan of it. I'm just not a fan of blanket pesticide applications. That's my opinion, but it'll only last tonight, so you guys can do what you need to do to move forward. But I would think that we should take a look at and try to find potential alternatives before we just assume that we don't need an alternative.
All right. Well, I have two selectmen that would like to pass this on to Conservation Commission, and so we will do that, and let them know that we do have a deadline to make our response by. And if they do have objection to this, they need to give us an alternate way to treat them prior to our deadline. them prior to our deadline. The deadline is just for our chance to opt out. We really don't have to take any action on it. So actually, as of tonight, we've taken no action, so we're still scheduled for our spraying. The opt-out is still, you know, on the table for the future if Conservation thinks it's wise and has another plan that they can get approved. Open space recreation plan contract. Jessica?
Yes.
You want to sign the contract, do you?
Yes, so I received a grant last month that will allow us to update our open space and recreation plan, which hasn't been done in over a decade. And, you know, definitely we received that grant, but in order to execute the grant, I need to sign the contract, so that's why I put it in front of the board for your consideration for me to sign.
Have you been in touch with any members of the Open Space Committee? I think we did get a few, and we posted that.
Yeah, we do have a full Open Space and Recreation Committee. I think there's going to need to be one appointment, which I have a resident who expressed interest in a different board, but I think this board would fit that resident well. So once this contract is signed, I'm going to gather the Open Space and Rec Committee together, so we'll start working on that.
Excellent. Anybody have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the proposed contract with CMRPC to complete the revised open space and recreation plan and therefore have something to submit to the state.
And approve Jessica signing the contract?
And approve Jessica signing the contract upon the board approving the contract.
Excellent.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to second for the open space agreement contract, and Jessica's signature there too. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes. Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. DLTA Route 122 scenic byway designation support.
Yes. So a couple weeks ago, or maybe about a week or two ago, I received an email from CMRPC requesting the Town of Berry's support for the Town of Rutland's scenic byway designation on Route 122. They wanted a letter of support from the Select Board, but I, they needed the letter of support before this meeting, so I, but they still said it would be worthwhile for the Select Board to consider it and express support because they are interested in extending this scenic byway designation down into Berry as well.
I believe we've already accepted the designation in Berry last year. Did we not? Did we accept Route 122 as a scenic byways in Berry already? We've already done our acceptance?
That rings a bell to me. Yes, and I'm trying to remember, but we talked about potentially trying to find funds so we can put up proper signage to identify it.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I can reach back out to them and let them know. I mean, I'm assuming CMRPC would have been involved in this scenic byway.
You could check with Andrew too and see if he recalls what, how we researched that.
Yeah.
He loves to hear from us, so he must be bored out there in Rutland.
Don't hesitate to also check in with some of our local resources, such as Lucy Allen. And the reason I bring it up is 122 is already a scenic byway through several towns, so I'm, does it stop in Paxton? Or does it actually go, actually extend further from the west and we're heading east? So like it stops in Berry and it needs to make it to Rutland now?
Yeah, probably going the other way, because there's more scenic certainly out in Western Mass, and the further west you go, the more scenic it is.
But I know if you drive down 122 between here and Worcester, you're going to see a brown little sign that says scenic byway on 122 somewhere in one of the towns on the way. I can't recall exactly where, but I remember vividly seeing the sign, and I, next time I go to work, if I see it, I'll stop and take a picture. So I can better understand what scenic byway means. Is this a state-registered scenic byway? Because in the Town of Berry, we have five or six other roads we also identify as scenic byway based on bylaw references. I'm assuming it's state, otherwise why is CMRPC involved, but?
Yeah, it's either state, or it could be federal as well.
And maybe that's the difference.
I see that this says built off prior projects, including Lost Village's scenic byway corridor and Rutland Open Space and Recreation Plan, which might be, I believe that's what we were talking about last time, whenever that was, a year ago, a year and a half, two years ago, it was the Lost Village's scenic byway corridor, I believe.
I believe, and we specifically talked about 122. We had some concerns, and they talked about the signage, it was allowed within so many feet of the highway, and the answers came back that it wouldn't affect the businesses that are already there and signage up. So maybe not specifically phrase 122, but I think that's a corridor in general that they're talking about. So I would, I think you reach out to Rutland and let them know, the letter was to you, that we've already discussed this in some part for Berry and have supported the scenic byway designation out here in this portion. So they do have our support in it. If they feel they need a letter, I don't know why they'd need a letter.
Well, the letter isn't for the Town of Rutland in so much as it's for CMRPC because CMRPC is applying for a grant on behalf of Rutland for state. It's either state, I kind of think it is more towards the federal designation based off of reading the application. So I think it's to wherever CMRPC is looking for funding, which is, the DLTA is-
Well, as you said, the time has passed, and they really need the letter by anyway, so let's not jump at doing anything for it. But you could certainly reach back to them, let them know that we have supported this in the past.
Yep.
And I think that's fair enough to say. Isn't that right? COVID updates. Yeah, it's you again.
Yes. I don't have a whole lot for COVID update this week, just because we're kind of in a period of time where we're just seeing more residents getting vaccinated. Rutland is still our vaccination site, and they've been doing exceptionally well on, you know, vaccinating the towns that they are responsible for, and they're continuously performing above and beyond the state averages. So things are looking really well for vaccination purposes in this area. I don't have any more information on the federal funding that we're going to be getting. As I, you know, mentioned, I think a meeting or two back, we're going to be getting some federal funds out of the new stimulus package. I still don't have any details on how we can use those funds, but once I do, I will be happy to share. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention is that since we have, you know, so many residents that are getting access to the vaccine, and now, you know, all of the staff for the town, if they want the vaccine, they are eligible to get the vaccine. So we plan on opening the town hall back to the public May 3rd.
Very good.
May 3rd will be the first Monday after all town staff who want the vaccine should be vaccinated completely, so.
Excellent. That was my next question, so you cut me off before I got to it. I had one, and I lost it. That's, that's pretty bad. You gentlemen, anything else? Oh, I was going, I know what I was going to ask. What's our current positive case number in town?
I haven't gotten a positive case number in a couple weeks just because of how much our public health nurse, who has been the one kind of responsible for overseeing all of the contact tracing and the positive case in rates tracing and recording, she's also been dealing with vaccination distribution, which is really her main focus right now. So I think her reporting to the town has been delayed. I do know that the town is no longer in the red or the yellow, so our positive rates are very low.
I was going to say, my suspicion is the lack of reporting. I think she's been doing her diligence. I think if she had cases come in, she'd take the 30 seconds to give you the phone call and let you know. So I, you know, doesn't mean it's for sure, but I would presume the lack of phone calls means we just haven't had new cases coming up lately, which is good.
It's probably pretty low. I wouldn't say zero, but it's definitely low. And I've, I've watched the state, the map that they produce weekly, and Berry is no longer has any kind of level of threat.
Very good. You guys have anything to add for COVID before we move on to old business?
No, I just would say, just be careful. We're not completely out of the woods yet. We're real close, and I know everybody's seeing that. But just maybe give it a couple weeks before you just go racing right out there. I know people don't want to hear it anymore. So I've said it, take it to your own advice, and just be careful.
No one wants to be the last person to get sick. You'd feel pretty foolish at this point.
Okay, old business, Lions Club Car Show. We now have their certificate of insurance for $2,000, $2 million per named, for the name insured. Total policy's $2 million. It looks like $100,000 each occurrence of the $2 million liability policy. Fire and EMS has signed off. Has no one else signed off on this yet?
No, we have the fire, we have-
There's separate pages, there's, there we go.
For death health, yeah.
Flip the page, Greg. Flip the page.
Conservation, planning. Police. Yeah, everybody who has a stake in it has approved.
I didn't, what did you say, the police?
The police is the first one I'm going to use for insurance.
There we go, okay. So we have a completed application for the use of town property, and I don't remember the date. That page isn't attached to it. Do you know offhand?
I don't remember offhand.
September 11th. It's September 11th.
September 11th.
Yep.
So we have a completed application for use of town property for the Lions Club for the car show on September 11th. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the use of town property by the Lions Club on September 11th.
Second that motion.
Motion to second to approve the use of town property for the Berry Lions Club for the car show on September 11th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Next, we have meeting minutes from March 15th. Have you gotten to go through these? You guys want to put them off?
They look good to me. I'm okay with them. I have no comments.
And I would look for the appropriate motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the meeting minutes from March 15th, 2021.
I second that.
Motion to second to approve the meeting minutes of March 15th, 2021. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. We have no other correspondences to read. We'll go to Select Board reports. We'll start with Dylan.
I don't have a report other than I want to thank Mr. Urban here for all of his years of service to the town, and I look forward to seeing what he does next. So thank you very much, Matt. And other than that, have a happy spring, everybody. That's my selectman report.
All right. I have no other official business for selectman report. I also, Matt, want to thank you for your service to this town and the Board of Selectmen, and looking forward to hopefully seeing you on the, on the planning board to continue with that. And with that, we'll turn the floor over to Selectman Urban and give him a few minutes for summary, parting words, whatever you'd like to say, hopefully 10 minutes or so, but we'll see where we go.
I'm going to try to keep it to less than that. But I do want to say thank you very much to both of you. Our time on the board together has been very respectful. We've been able to talk about things, work through things, and I think as a board, we've been able to do a good job. Getting through a lot in the last year and a half. It wasn't just the COVID impact, but COVID hit just as we also went through quite a cycle of in department heads, town administrator. We had to put a lot of work in to try to keep things moving. So I thank you guys for the time and commitment you put in to this town to make that happen. I think if we didn't, we would have had further repercussions from some of the changes in personnel, and by working as closely as we could, as quickly as we could, I think things worked out very well. So thank you very much, guys. I'd like to say thank you to Jessica for the time I've had a chance to work with her. I think you've got a good town administrator there, and I think she's, she's got the right temperament to deal with people like us. So that in itself is its own gift. I appreciated the time Heather. I know she was only here for about six months, but I think she did a really good job coming into pretty much just chaos. I mean, she was on the job for four weeks, and then the pandemic hit. So that was good for her, and thank you very much. And going back to Andrew, you know, Greg and I spent pretty much Andrew's whole term together. So it was, I think we've had good things here as a board. We've had some good, you know, town administrators, good department heads, we've had a few change over. And I also, you know, our town accountant been huge for this town, town clerk, the continuity with those two have made things much easier for us in so many places. I think Andrea, people that don't go into the Henry Woods Building don't really know what Andrea does for the town, but she's extremely critical for the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner and that department. And anybody that really has to do business with town and it has anything to do with business or their own building and what to do, they've come to realize that she knows what she's doing, and she knows how to guide them in the right direction. So she's been very important, and during the pandemic, obviously, the Board of Health's role and her role with that has been very important, so I thank her for the time and commitment she's put in. There's a million other people I could thank. I'm going to leave out Public Safety and DPW because, well, I think I've been pretty well-spoken about my appreciation of what they do for the town. I've got eight bullets, and I'm going to just list them and not get into discussion, and this is how I'll end it. All right, so for any of this additional funding, two things I think the board might want to consider. One is the purchase of that interceptor hybrid vehicle. Again, if you reach out to Needham Police, it's what they're using for some of their new cruisers, and they say a lot of good things about it. Two, deep in my own brain, thinking about economic development and some of the difficulties with our local businesses, this is a source of funding we didn't have at the time when people came to us and said, could you reduce or remove our fees to continue to do business in town? to us and said, could you reduce or remove our fees to continue to do business in town? Maybe look at providing a 50% credit to all those people that have filed for licensing fees by the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Health in 2020 and 2021. Just consider it. I don't know what the total cost would be because I don't know how much revenue that was. But if we can use it as an economic development incentive, I think it might be a valuable gift to give back to some of the businesses that are kind of the lifeblood of our community. Just a reminder, 2024, it's our 250th anniversary, town anniversary. We do have a committee and I know during Covid and the pandemic, they probably didn't do much. I'm not saying they did nothing, but we may want to reach out to them and start looking at finding a way to put a little money away each year to build something that they can count on to purchase certain entertainments or create something. I've been told like if you want a band to come here, sometimes you have to pay for it and you have to schedule it like sometimes a year or two in advance. So that means we need to have some money now committed so that they can reach out if they wanted the UMass marching band to come and play for the town of Berry for some reason. That's just an example. But there you go. Don't forget, that's only not quite three years away at this point. Or, well, I guess it's three years and like a month and a half, two months. So June 19, I forget. It's on the wall behind us there on that, behind you, Greg.
17.
17.
Awesome. Thank you. 9/11 memorials. We just need to check in with that committee again. I know they had some plans and then again, Covid hit. So maybe we can just get an update from them. Cable expansion. All I can say is I think we should look at some type of legal consultant that might explain how we can use these funds if we wanted to help people with their private services to their house, the ones that have to pay $3,000 to get it from the street to their house. It would be more of the concept of a loan program, maybe loan it over 10 years. Someone has to pay another $300 a year. Maybe they can manage it in their budget, but if they're asked to do 3,000 right up front, they're never going to get it. Just a thought. Number five, review the marijuana bylaws and just make sure we set up our licensing fees appropriately. And you may want to just check the bylaws to figure out if we ever truly defined an indoor and an outdoor. And if a site has both, does it fall into one or the other? It may be something the board's either going to have to define by precedent or we may want to clarify in a bylaw update. It's already been brought up, but possibly we want to look into just making it a regular thing, whether it's quarterly or something, just choose one aspect of the administration and finance policy, kind of dig into it, work through some revisions that may be outdated or need to be updated and maybe take it a chapter at a time. You know, maybe you do two or three chapters a year and by the time we're there, we're, we're ready to start from the beginning and start over. Lastly, and I'll bring this up myself, but when it comes to developing the budget every year and we speak about the Finance Committee, my experience is we primarily look at the budget can only increase by two and a half percent. You got your levy limits, you got your, your ceiling, you got different rules. And generally outside of trying to keep a small little cushion, it looks like what we try to do is make the budget fit with the capacity available. In doing so, we usually walk out of there, we go to town, town votes for it, and we wait for someone to go through the full approval before in November, we know how to hit our tax rate. The truth is, all of those numbers, when budgeted, can give you an estimated effect on your tax rate. It's, so do they ever actually look at what they believe the impact of the tax rate would be before pursuing the final goal of what the budget they want is? And so I'm just curious, if we look at it a different way, do we just want to make sure we spend the money that we have available? Or do we look to say, how can we make this work without the tax rate increasing? It's just something I figured we could ask. Who knows? Lastly, I mentioned it at my candidate's night. I'll bring it up again now. I'm not sure if the Board of Selectmen want to take leave on this. Are you interested in pursuing a bylaw that requires at least some of your major boards and committees? At this point, that's probably what we have resources for, to be recorded and available at a later date. I call Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, DPW Commission, Board of Health and Conservation Commission, the major boards and commissions that the public is going to want to be able to pay attention to. They're usually the ones that if a bylaw comes before town meeting, it went through one of those offices to get there. So I think it's critical being able to go back and watch a video if you couldn't make a meeting because otherwise you don't really know how you got to the final draft of a bylaw. You don't know what was discussed. And I think if you want a clean, clear annual town meeting, you'd like to be able to say that everybody had a chance to understand that something that they're bringing up on the floor actually was discussed prior. And right now, I don't think that's necessarily available, depending on the board, because some don't record, some don't make it so that people can catch up if they're not available at the exact same time in night that a board meeting is held. Those are my bullets. So you can throw them all away again if you want, but at least this is recorded and Sandy will be able to reference it or anybody else can hear what I said and go with it. But again, thank you very much, guys.
All right. Now, before we do go, I will bring up one other thing. We did have a correspondence. We had a complaint from a woman with an interaction with the police department and a trip to the hospital which she didn't want to take and has, that complaint is something that's followed up by the town administrator and if necessary, it would come public later, but I don't think it will be from what I've heard on it. The other portion of what she requests is that we consider waiving her ambulance fees for her trip that day. I didn't specifically put it on the agenda, but I did want to just bring it up. So she knows we have talked about it. But we do have a method that we deal with every, every year or so with the fire department. They do try to recover what they can for fees and when fees can't be recovered and not recoverable, at some point, they are written off anyway. So I don't see any need to address this right now. We don't know anything about personal financials, ability to pay, what the bill is or anything like that. So I didn't want to entertain just randomly forgiving someone's bill. You know, we've talked about this in the past and it's not something we normally do because I don't want to start the precedent of saying, oh, you're just, just come see us and we'll forgive the fees. Unlike, unlike the use of town property fees that we often forgive for private entities. You know, these are individuals that use the ambulance service that literally costs us money, a traceable amount of money. And the amount as high as it seems for an ambulance when they charge a fee for an ambulance trip, you only get the ambulance to so many years at a very large expense. You know, the ambulance costs us about $100,000 a year to buy it. And that has to be paid for by the calls that it goes out on. So I didn't want to entertain dismissing the fees. And I certainly didn't want to discuss her other complaint because it's not appropriately before this board at this point in any way. But I did want to make sure, I don't know if you guys both got the same letter or not, but if you wanted to have any words on that briefly, we can. But I didn't want to delve into it for those reasons. Yep.
I don't want to speak about the actual incident or the complaint because I agree that it goes a different path and now is not the time or place to discuss that.
Right.
But I do believe, and I'm not certain if I read it in an email or if I'm just remembering it, but I believe if she did not want to take the ambulance, quote unquote, reserve, refuse service, but potentially did not have the choice in the matter, then she's not responsible for the bill. And I think it'll prove itself out if that's the case. So just like you said, Greg, let the walk, walk. It'll figure itself out. If that is the case, then I, but I do believe and I appreciate the fact that you brought it up. So at least the person is aware that this isn't something we're ignoring.
Right. I didn't want them to think we hadn't had any discussion on it. I know I've had discussed them with Jessica and ambulance personnel and others involved. And I just want to make sure that they understood it was being, you know, taken seriously and looked into. Dylan, do you have any comment?
No, I don't have any additional comment.
All right. With that, I would look for the appropriate motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion to adjourn.
I, maybe I'm getting, maybe I'm getting ahead of ourselves. We didn't give Jessica her report. She's, she's biting her tongue over there. I'm going to jump without, so we're going to hold off on that motion and let Jessica do her, her administrative report. I apologize, gentlemen. I got a little ahead of myself. I could see her fidgeting. I'm like, oh, what did I do?
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to Matt for his service here on the Select Board. I really enjoy getting to work with you. You know, he's offered a lot of constructive feedback to me over the past, probably about nine months that I've been here. And I think that's really valuable to have, you know, members of the Select Board who really care about their community. And all three of you exhibit those qualities that, you know, Matt just want to make mention of that. My other updates, we have the senior center repairs from the valve breaking in February. We have, the repairs are almost complete. We could see, depending on where they come back with on the rug, there's still some debate on whether the rug should be replaced or not. So hopefully by the end of April, at the latest, we'll have the senior center completely finished as far as repair goes due to the valve burst, pipe burst. The fire station building committee has been meeting pretty regularly and on Wednesday, they will be choosing a firm to do the feasibility study. Once they choose that firm and negotiate a fee, then they'll be in a position to request funds for that study. And they have four firms that they're looking at currently. And the fire department also received a $12,500 grant for firefighter P P E and turnout gear. That's five sets of it. So just another tip to Chief Rogowski, who's gotten a lot of grants this year. He keeps just banging them out and it's great for his department to be able to get that extra funding for some pretty expensive gear and equipment that otherwise would put some stress on his budget. And then the final thing that I wanted to mention is that Chief Rogowski has also been working with a member of the Hardwick Board of Selectmen on potentially expanding EMS service into Hardwick. As you all know, Berry partners with New Braintree right now and offers EMS service to them. And Hardwick is looking for alternatives to their current service with the town of Ware. And so tomorrow, as I mentioned, I'm meeting with the town administrator in Hardwick and that is going to be a part of our, you know, the bulk of our conversation is going to be talking about this potential partnership, what the options are for the town, what's going to benefit the town of Berry, what could potentially hurt the town of Berry. And then hopefully, you know, after we have that discussion, we'll have a joint meeting between the Select Board in Hardwick and the Select Board in Berry to discuss more permanent arrangements.
Thank you.
And that's my, that's what I have for you this week.
You guys have any questions or input on, comments on that? In that case, I had a motion to second to adjourn. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Good night, everyone. Good luck, Matt, with the planning board. Let's hope the election goes away.